Thanks for joining us for City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Mayor Jerry Cook. Today, we're talking about both the December 4th and the December 18th City Council meetings. Thanks for being here today.
Absolutely.
Our final meetings of 2018.
Isn't that something?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and really, the end of my first term as mayor.
Yeah, that's hard to believe too, four years already and...
Blink of an eye.
Yeah, you're at the halfway point now with the four more years. All right, and our last meeting of the year turned out to be like our longest meeting in like, gosh, over seven years at least.
Yeah, yeah, there was a, well, there was a lot of agenda items and then there were some that just really, you know, there was a lot to go over.
Yeah, definitely. I saw the items, I think I counted, I'm like, oh, 25, you know, you can do that pretty quick. And then, because I was looking later and I'm like, then I saw the word "appeal" twice. And I'm like, oh, this is going to be a little bit longer than just, just, because sometimes we can blow through 25 items pretty quick.
Well, and I, and I thought I had a kind of a handle on the appeals going in, you know how you always kind of figure out it's going to go in. And I really thought we'd be out of there by a little after nine. Yeah, I missed that by an hour and a half.
Yeah, so it turned out to be about a three and a half hour meeting, but we made it, got all the business conducted, kind of wrapped things up for the year there for the agendas. So let's jump into the last meeting of the year, December 18th. One of the first items there, we had a fun thing, a graduation of the Coon Rapids Police Reserve Police Officers from the academy.
Yeah, yeah, that was really fun. So, we have a very vital reserve group in town that does, you know, that does so much, our community service. Police Chief Wise, they, they serve about 2,000 hours of volunteer time a year. You'll see them during the, the big festival, the 4th of July Festival, you see them directing traffic, it's, it's a lot of hours. So we really appreciate them, all their service to the community and, and frankly, and it's a, it's a good way for some of them, if they're thinking about law enforcement, it's a good way for them to get their feet wet and for the department to get to know them and kind of see how they, how they respond and how they work and, yeah, it was good.
All right, so we brought them all up and they received a pin, I believe, or something like that from the...
I think, no, they actually reserve, they received their reserve badge.
Badge, okay, that's what they were handing out. I know they were going every other to hand them out, so...
Yeah, yeah, logistically, a little leapfrog there, but could have been smoother, but that's okay.
That's okay, they all got their badges in the end and welcome aboard and like you said, they provide available service to the city.
I don't know how we would function through our big events without, without them helping with traffic control and just, yeah, the whole thing.
All right, well, we also had another presentation that was sort of added here to the agenda. This one is for two citizens awards and this was also a neat deal.
This was something that I re, I mean, I remember reading about it when it happened and then it was, as they described the incident again, it was a young man from Anoka walking a dog along Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension down near, you know, Sycamore, Redwood down there. And apparently, the dog pulled him and pulled him forward and he fell and impaled his thigh on a signpost or something, well, ended up cutting a, severing an artery and he managed to get himself free and crawled to the road and thankfully, these Good Samaritans stopped to help him and it sounds like he would not have made it, that the radio's losing blood, had they not stopped and applied pressure and got him through it. And, oh my gosh, it was, it was, thank God for people that actually will step up and help.
Yeah, because you know, it's these days, I mean, there are a lot of people that do and you don't know what you do in that situation, but there's a lot of people that don't want to face a possible lawsuit or something like that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and I think there's some real good laws written to protect bystanders. You know, if you, what you do, what you're doing, you believe is, is in the best interest of them and you're really trying to help, I think there's some Good Samaritan laws that protect them, but I'm just very thankful that they stepped up and...
Yeah, and didn't think twice, jumped into action. I know the one guy was in the military, I believe, they said.
Yeah, he is, well, because once a Marine, always a Marine, yeah, yeah.
So he applied a tourniquet, took his belt off and got the bleeding stopped or under control until medics could get there. So these two, Brian Hiltoner and Daniel McKee, were both given life-saving awards, right?
Yeah, citizen awards, which this is only the, I think the second time I've seen those awarded and, so that's a pretty, pretty big deal. I think the, the last time I can recall was that it was a one-vehicle incident out on Highway 10 and somebody had gone into and pulled somebody out of a burning vehicle or something. So it's, it's a pretty big deal and we're just very thankful that it ended the way that it did and we're thankful that people are willing to step up.
Yeah, so the young man that was saved essentially was at the meeting, he thanked his two Good Samaritans that helped him and he was still on a crutch, so he still has some of the effects from the, the accident that happened several months ago.
Yep, yeah, and he's, you know, obviously, well, maybe not obviously, but he was very emotional about it and, I mean, he recognizes that he would have died there had it not been for those gentlemen stepping up and helping him, so, big deal.
All right, council had a consent agenda as usual, we had an item there we wanted to talk about. This is a report from the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation Board of Directors. This organization is actually going to be changing names here.
It is, and I just wanted to make sure that I had the right...
The name, it's number nine.
The new name, yeah, number nine, right?
Yep.
All right, so, there we go, got it. So the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation has had multi, you know, they've helped with home improvements, they've helped with the Home for Generations project, they've home, they've helped with down payment assistance for homes, basically, anything to do with helping our housing stock in town and helping people keep their homes up. And the down payment assistance thing hasn't been as big a deal and, but the home improvement is a really important aspect, so they've actually, they're changing the name of the organization from the Coon Rapids Mortgage Assistance Foundation to the Coon Rapids Home Improvement Foundation and they're coming up with a new logo for that, so it's going to be a new doing business as. And they had a very busy year, normally, they're a group that meets once a year and last year, they met several times, really re-identifying themselves and repurposing themselves and making sure that they're, they're staying vital and helpful. So it's kudos, kudos to the, to the, to them and a great operation and they're, you know, then they did some housekeeping, there was a couple funds that they're tying together as one and, but this started from, I don't know, I can always, I can always forget, but I think it was the eight and seven A's interest rate or something, the homes back in the 80s, they did home developments based on these, on a bond project and so it helped stimulate housing in an otherwise very tough housing time. And they went, okay, well, that's great. And then all of a sudden, the houses started to get refinanced and all of a sudden, all of this money started showing up and they went, oh, we didn't think about that, you know, and it ended up, it was millions of dollars of windfall really for the city and so that's all been committed to Coon Rapids Housing Stock. So, it's a, it's a good organization and I really encourage people, if your, if your homes are in need of some improvements, to really look into this and look into the available options we've got here.
Yeah, and there's several programs, I know most, we've talked a lot about the Home for Generations program and Home for Generations too, but I know they have several programs and it sounds like they're going to be launching another program next year called Curb Appeal, which is focused on exterior improvements for homes in Coon Rapids. So we'll be talking about more of that coming up here in 2019.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, it's, it's, this is one of those, it's all good.
Yeah, definitely. All right, moving along, our longest item of the night, this was an appeal of a planning commission decision regarding a site plan and conditional use permit for a self-storage facility near Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension and Vale Street.
Right, so when you're driving east on Coon Rapids Boulevard, past the old, Coon Rapids Shopping Center's been gone since 2005, that's probably a bad historical monument. And, and the city hall's been gone for longer than that, so that's a bad monument. We have Lily Putt down there, yeah, oh yeah, the Clay Hole, yeah.
The Clay Hole's still there.
Yeah, right, it's still there, but nobody, yeah. Lily Putt is down there, the Alternative High School is down there, at any rate. East on Coon Rapids Boulevard, just before the split with East River Road, there's this high ground where it's between Coon Rapids Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension and it sits about 15 feet higher than the Boulevard. The easternmost portion of that land is bordered by Coon Rapids Boulevard and the railroad tracks and there's a storage facility there now that's, you know, there's some indoor storage and then it's just got some very messy outdoor storage and it's, it's kind of a tough spot. Well, now, this is the rest of that development up there and it's kind of this island, it's only got access from Vale Street, so it doesn't have very good ingress and egress for people to access it. So they came forward with a proposal to put in indoor storage buildings and it's a, it's, it's a very nice storage facility. I think they did a very good job laying it out, trying to make it architecturally, aesthetically pleasing as much as you can make one of those. It's just, it's a very tough situation or a tough spot because it's the gateway. I mean, when you're coming down Coon Rapids Boulevard, that's what you're looking at and it's a difficult thing for them to develop, it's, it's zoned industrial and they've owned it since 1940, they said. And so at any rate, they went to the planning commission with this proposal, the planning commission didn't feel that, that was, they, they had the latitude to approve it, so it was denied. They appealed it to the city council and they presented about a 45-minute case for why we should overrule planning commission, but there was enough new information that they presented that we really wanted staff to have time to, to really look through it and, and kind of let us know, if not this, what? If not this, what do you see, what, what do we really want there? Because we would like to see that developed, they would like to quit paying property taxes on a chunk of land that they haven't found a use for, you know, and the council is very sympathetic to that and, but we just need to make sure we're getting the best project we can there. So, right at this point, it ended up after very, you know, we, we don't table things very much, but there was so much new information introduced that at the end of all the discussion, it was like, you know what, we really need to table this to give staff time to consider what was presented tonight and then come back to council and then we'll talk about it again, we'll remove it from the table sometime in the future, we didn't make a date certain, I would guess sometime in January.
All right, and they need a conditional use permit essentially to have a self-storage facility on this location?
Right, so self-storage, the storage unit fits within industrial zoning, however, this is part of the River Rapids Overlay District, so that has another layer of control over what goes in there. And technically, it's supposed to be something that encourages community, encourages people to, to form a community. Well, a storage unit really doesn't necessarily do that, but we don't really know what would go there that would do that. And that's what we want staff to come back and kind of let us know, you know, in a perfect world, what would we want there?
Yeah, and there's a lot of talk about this being the gateway to the city in that location and with the new housing development going on in Port Overwalk, you kind of want that area to, to shine. And there was some concern, I mean, they talked about putting that fence up, but I know some, some had a concern about the fence as well.
Right, right, well, yeah, what do you want to look up and look at, you know, and they had a big, long privacy fence. I would almost argue that that's not much different than looking at the back of a storage building if they, you know, if they structured it that direction, you know, and it's, and it's storage, so it has to be fenced somehow. It was, it was very tough, the council, I think, I think is very divided on, on whether it should go there or not, but the council is very together on the fact that we want the best project we can get there. So we'll just see, see how it comes back and how we move forward.
So like you said, it's been tabled for now, we'll obviously be hearing, hearing more about this issue coming up in the next few months.
Right, well, yeah, and as you mentioned, this has been vacant, but at the same time now, we have 145 units of new housing going in across the street on a chunk of parcel, on a parcel that's been vacant for 14 years. So how is that going to, how is that going to affect future demand down there for things? You know, I don't know, I don't know, Steve, it was, it was very tough and we just, I think council just wants more information on it.
All right, well, we'll look forward to hearing more about that. Council held, considered a rental license renewal denial appeal, this was for Angela Carpenter at 12380 Drake Street and we had a little bit, spent a little bit of time discussing this item.
Yeah, yeah, and it was, it was good, I mean, you know, she came forward and I think she had a very reasonable hope and that was not necessarily that we renew her rental license, but that we allow her tenant time to move out, you know, so, because right now, she was holding a notice that said, your rental license has been denied and your tenants have to be out in, I don't know, it was 30 days or 60 days, which presents a real hardship for tenants. And, you know, we have so many protections in this state for, for, for winter, you know, with utilities and with being put out of your, your property in the winter, so we, we ended up just resolving it with, we're not going to renew your rental license, you are going, you know, they're, they're going to sell the property, but the tenants are going to be allowed to stay until May 31st. You know, the proper, well, the property has to be vacated by May 31st, I think was the, the stipulation to me, that kind of is the same thing, but, and, and everybody seemed satisfied with that outcome. You know, there was just that, there was something that she had on her record that didn't allow us to give that property a, a rental license. With the COSCAN Act in law, there's Class A felonies, Class B felonies, and there was a Class B felony there that precluded them for having a rental license in Coon Rapids for 10 years.
Okay, but this is also something we did as, right? Because we went beyond the COSCAN Act in law.
So the COSCAN Act in law is very specific to property managers and the city of Coon Rapids took that additionally as property owners, you know, because as a property owner, you have access to the property as well. And that really was what it comes down to, is access. I think the COSCAN Act in law with the property managers, it's really dealt to deal with, you know, most apartment buildings have a property manager and that's who's on site. And there's a, and I think a lot of the ownership is corporate and things, whereas a lot of our owners are, you know, mom and pop, we own some, we own some rentals.
Yeah, but don't necessarily have anything to do with the day-to-day operations, they might have a property manager for their property and never have talked to the people.
Right, and then that's entirely possible, but you still can't deny them access to their property if they're an owner, so that's why Coon Rapids expanded the law to include property managers and include the property owners.
Okay, so as, as we said, these come up from time to time, we've had a couple of them now and in this case, the council affirmed the denial, but are allowing the renter to stay there until May 31st of 2019.
Good clarification, yes.
All right.
That's exactly what happened.
Council had a couple feasibility reports and ordering of public hearings and assessment hearings. This all relates to street reconstruction, something we do annually here, hard to think that we're going into winter that street reconstruction will be coming again, but you know, it will.
Yep, four, four separate projects and when you say separate projects, it's, it's four separate projects, however, each one has many, many streets. 19-1, you've got 19 different segments of streets, primarily up around Crooked Lake, 131st, Bittersweet, all those streets in there. Another project is 19 Streets, 117th and Foley, Evergreen Circle, Butternut, Alder, Evergreen. Everybody that's impacted by these has already gotten a letter from the city, they've already had an open house on November 27th and some really good information came out of that. What we learned from that was there's a neighborhood that's, that's set for reconstruction, Cottonwood Street, 116th Avenue to the cul-de-sac. And they brought forward something in November that we didn't realize was an issue and that was when University Avenue was reconstructed. Northward Movement was stopped at 115th, which is kind of that cut across from Dogwood, from Northdale Middle School. Well, so now, all of a sudden, they've got buses, they've got a dozen buses or more a day going up this little residential street, plus a lot of the parents, a lot of the cars, so we're looking into that. The school district is working, looking, looking into that right now to see if that's reasonable or if that's an overuse of that street. That was a segue, sorry, we'll go back to this now. 121st Avenue, from 9th Avenue to Cree in the very west side of Coon Rapids, that's actually in conjunction with the city of Anoka. And then Foley, 124th to 115th, so that's a very large project, that's the one that's, Foley's been reconstructed now, all the way from Highway 10, first segment was up to Yegrit, second segment was up to Northdale or 115th and now, now we're reconstructing the part that the city is, controls from 115th up to Main Street. And there's going to be some, a lot of changes with that, trying to calm the traffic down, trying to make pedestrian crossings safer, actually moving, shifting the road a little bit to the west to include a trail on the east side. It's, yeah, it's all about safety and livability and walkability and, yeah.
All right, as you mentioned, the folks that are impacted by these and will be receiving assessments have been notified, there will be an assessment hearing at the council meeting on February 19th. So that's a time to talk about any of the assessments and then the construction will be moving forward this spring and summer.
Right, right, yeah, and I think the, the individual assessment portion now is like So if you, if you are somebody that lives on one of those streets and you have not otherwise paid a street assessment, like sometimes, if you live on a corner, you're only going to pay for one street. And if you haven't paid for the other street and you, you know, you'll be paying for this street then. And it's $2,070, you can either write a check next spring so there's no interest or you don't do anything and it just goes to your taxes for the next 10 years, a couple hundred dollars a year and it's pretty low interest.
All right.
Pretty painless.
All right, we'll move on to a couple labor agreements that council approved, one with the International Association of Firefighters and also one with Teamsters Local 320, which is our public works group. Two-year deals, I know we had, they previously had a three-year contract, those are up, so you've kind of been in renegotiations for that this fall.
Yeah, so we're always very thankful when we can reach an agreement that everybody seems to be happy with. And so the firefighters, the Teamsters Local, which is our public works, and then of course, then you have to settle with, then, then you have to create a contract for all the unrepresented employees and, and so that's done. And I think it's two and three-quarter percent cost of living in 19 and 3% in 2020, if I remember that right. So we're very thankful, they, they go and they do all kinds of research, you know, similar community sizes, similar things and they just try and work out what's fair and some little adjustments for uniform and things, uniforms and things, but, yeah, it all seems good.
So this will be settled for the next two years, essentially 2019 and 2020, I know they're still working on the police contract and then the sergeants' unit as well. All right, we'll move along to a resolution establishing Bunker Hills Golf Course fees and charges, this is something that has to be done annually.
Yeah, and there's been significant investment in Bunker Hills Golf Course in the last couple years with all of the redoing, all of the bunkers out there and it's just, it's, the course is just gorgeous and the playability has been so enhanced with the bunker, with all the bunkers being redone, but unfortunately, with all of that investment, you had, it is an enterprise fund, it has to pay its own way, so there's been some slight adjustments, nothing major and all really within the comp, the competition of the other golf courses. So $2 here, all very reasonable.
All right, and we did have one other item on there, we probably should mention, our finance director, Sharon Legg, you actually wrote a proclamation because she is retiring.
She's, yeah, Sharon Legg has been here for 24 years as a finance director and deserves a lot of the credit for the city's great, you know, incredible credit rating and just how well-run, I mean, every year, we, we earn awards for our audits and for our, you know, that comprehensive, it's, you know, it's the full city report, including all the financials and it's just, the city is very well-run, it's very well-managed and financially, we're in a very good place. And a lot of that can be attributed to somebody like, you know, or like Sharon Legg, who has really stepped up and maintains, runs it, runs the ship.
Yeah, she really knows her stuff, she's going to be missed by all of us, you know, she really enjoyed all those TV interviews, wink, wink.
Yeah, wink, wink.
Actually go get her because she didn't say anything at the council meeting. I'm like, Sharon, we need to talk to you and say goodbye officially on the show. So, but best wishes to her, I know, she'll definitely be enjoying her retirement.
I think she's having cake and punch on the 27th in the afternoon at city hall, maybe you bring a camera and put her on the spot there.
We may, get her on twice at least before, before she's gone.
If it doesn't work there, bring it to Kendall's later.
Maybe we'll do all three. All right, well, that's all the items we have on our last meeting of the year they want to talk about. Going back to our first meeting of the month on December 4th, we had another presentation there, this involved a cardiac arrest save here in the city.
This is fabulous, Coon Rapids is so fortunate, Coon Rapids is a heart-safe community, we recognize the importance of bystanders' involvement in CPR and, and when there's been a cardiac event. And in this case, this beautiful family came up and they wanted to thank the responders, Eric Lingbeck was there and he was somebody that most often wouldn't have been there. He suffered a cardiac arrest at home, his wife fortunately, oh gosh, and I'm going to, I don't know if she's a nurse or she had first, first response.
She'd worked in emergency room, I think she said.
Yeah, so, so she recognized what was going on, but she really received some really good help from our, from our 911 operator. Our police officer responded within, I thought it was like a minute and a half or something, came in and took control of the situation, but they were just, as she described it, that he helped her get him onto the floor, they got the CPR going and basically, the, the end of the story is, it's a father that gets more time with his, the kids get more time with their father, it's a wife that has more time with her husband and it's just such a beautiful outcome and it's because they knew to do chest compressions, they got an AED there and, yeah, it's, it's so important. And I just, I just cannot highlight that enough, that for everybody, if you don't understand and you don't know the, the, the chest compressions for the CPR, it's like a three-minute video and it's, it couldn't be simpler and it literally saves lives.
Yeah, I think they said there's almost 20,000 people now in the city that have been trained through the Coon Rapids HeartSafe program and it's paying off. I think the, the doctor who was here said the average survival rate is about 8% nationwide for a sudden cardiac arrest event and here in Coon Rapids, it's about 15%. So that's several more people that are alive thanks to the efforts of this program and people stepping up and doing the chest compressions and doing what they can before first responders get there.
Yeah, there's always going to be a situation when somebody goes down and there's nobody there to help, but if somebody goes down with a cardiac event, there is absolutely no excuse for people to stand there and not do anything because it's so easy to do the chest compressions and just keep that precious blood going to the brain, keep it moving until somebody can get through with an AED and somebody can, and get through with the rest of the help.
Yeah, and you know, the other thing that's, you don't think about too, all the people that are involved, once, once that starts, from the 911 dispatchers to the medics, to police, to fire, there was about 15 people that were involved in this specific call before they even got to the hospital.
Right.
So, and they recognized all those folks at the meeting and handed them out awards, I believe.
Yep, yeah, and it's, well, yeah, it's the life-saving pin.
A pin, and I couldn't remember if they got certificates or not.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know. It's just, all of that, really, it, that's all awesome, but when you look at that man standing there with his family that got another chance at life, that is just so powerful. And it, and again, it's so simple to be that help if you're there and it's just so, you know, when you listen to Officer Platts or any of them, when they talk about showing up and somebody's on the ground and everybody's just standing around going, I wish somebody would get here to do something, you know, don't wait for the help, be the help.
Yeah, precious seconds, that can make all the difference for sure. All right, council held a public hearing for the truth and taxation hearing and considered resolutions adopting the 2019 budget and tax levy.
Yeah, and that's, that, that represents a significant body of work, the staff work starts on early, early in the year, they get some input from council and then there's budget meetings through the year, the staff provides council its first full look at the budget in August and then September, we have to lock in, it won't exceed this dollar amount and then December, it's finally set for the truth and taxation. And, you know, it's expensive during the city and it really is. And this previous councils and this council, maintaining infrastructure is, is really critical and it's expensive to do that. And so it's, it, the budget reflects the priorities of the council based on recommendations from the staff and it represents a lot, a lot, represents a lot of work and I think it will create a good place to continue to live.
Yeah, and it's, you know, you talk about the budget, people are a big cost of that too, about 80% of the budget is person- About 80% of the budget is personnel costs, you know? So you have that, a smaller chunk to work with as far as doing all the projects that you want to do and the infrastructure improvements. So I believe that overall tax levy is up about 5%. The city levy for 2019. And folks should have received their truth in taxation notice right around Thanksgiving with your estimates on there. And those are real hard because it depends upon what's happened to your home over the year, when it's been looked at for improvements. So it's really hard to compare, you know? I know we try to do some comparisons, but it seems like every house is kind of individual. Every neighborhood is, is individual.
Yeah, and this year, the homes kind of took a double whammy because the county, the county went up to, the school bond referendums, and then the state dictates how the, how the levy is divided. And industrial commercials, industrial commercial, that value, those values didn't go up this year. Those stayed static, whereas our residential homes, the price of housing has continued to increase. So that unfortunately then moved some of the, the tax to the homes then. So it's, you know, and especially the lesser, you know, the, the more starter homes, the, however you want to say that, homes less than 200,000. Were even more impacted because the price of their homes went up significantly.
There's more demand for those homes, so the prices are going up.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's, unfortunately, that, how that gets divided is out of our control. But we do recognize that they did, they are seeing a burden.
Yeah, and we did have one resident speak who was more really about their value. So it's always a good thing to mention that the time to contest your value, there'll be a hearing in the spring. But if you have concerns now, you can always call the city assessor's office and they'll be happy to go over that with you and discuss how they came to that value and if any adjustments need to be made.
Yeah, we, Coon Rapids is one of the very few places that has its own assessing department. And they are very responsive, they're very customer-friendly. And, and if you believe that your value isn't right, you call them and they'll come out and they'll go through the property and they'll go through the estimate with you. And then if you still don't think it's fair, then you can appeal it. But I, I think that for the most part, once they lay out all their, these are our comparables, this is what we're using, it's really hard to find fault in them.
All right, moving along, council approved an animal impound agreement and fees with the Animal Humane Society. We are going back to them for impound services.
Yeah, so years ago, the Animal Humane Society was the, was the service for the community. And then they stopped doing it. So then we went to, and I don't recall what place it was, it was somewhere out eastern area here. And then they quit doing it. So then we were, we went with Dover Kennels up in Ramsey and wow, Ramsey and Andover. I've never tried to tie those names together. And Dover did a great job for us. But the Animal Humane Society in town here is ready to step up and do the service again. And it's just a lot more convenient for our residents to go, go recover their animals to be right here. The vet services are all right there. So it's, it'll be a good service. Dover did a great job for us. It's just nice to have it kind of in-house again.
All right, we also had one purchasing item to talk about there, and this was for new police and fire radios. Technology is changing.
And technology is expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, Motorola kind of has a little planned obsolescence with their stuff. And the, the radios that we were using, they stopped supporting, they're going to stop supporting them in January of 19. So basically, you're done then. You need to buy new radios. To the tune of, I think the police department was somewhere over a half a million dollars and the fire department, the fire department kind of changed how many radios they were getting. So it was 165,000 or something. And there'll be some, they'll be able to sell some of them back to Motorola. So there will be some, some recovery, but yeah, it's expensive.
And it's one of those things you have to have. I mean, first responders need their radios to head to those calls.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, that's going to bring us to the end of the items from that meeting. Quickly, we want to mention that our first meeting next year will actually be on the first Monday after the first business day of the year, which happens to be January 7th. So we'll actually have meetings in two consecutive weeks.
Yes, yeah, that's, yeah, that's right. When you look at the calendar, how that lines up. So it'll be the Monday and then the following week, it'll be on Tuesday.
Yeah, so just, so folks mentioned that. We have three council members being sworn in next year.
Oh, yeah.
Not new.
Not new, no. No, and it actually, this is really, it's a unique situation for us. And it's really nice because we don't have, we're not waiting for anybody to get up to speed. I mean, so we can start doing strat planning and we can do our retreat, we can do everything right off the bat. And, and it's, and it's a very good council. We work well together, very cohesive and, you know, and, and I like the fact that we bring a lot of different expertise, a lot of different opinions and, you know, but we're all of one mind and it's all about what's best for Coon Rapids. So, I don't know, seems like it's okay.
All right, so you'll be sworn in as mayor for another four-year term. And then council members Wade Demmer and Brad Johnson have been re-elected into four-year terms.
Council member Johnson's already been sworn in.
That's, yeah, I heard that because he was not going to be around.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so you and Wade Demmer will be sworn in at that first meeting of the year. All right, anything else you want to add before we go?
No, I can't believe, I would have thought we would have, would have been out of time by now.
We are, but we're just going to, we're just going to go over our slot. I think that's okay.
Okay, nope, nope. Just the warmest of holidays to everybody and Happy New Year.
All right, well, we appreciate you being here today, throughout the year, bringing us up to date on what's happened at the council meetings. Thank you at home for watching. Have a great Christmas and New Years and we'll see you back here in 2019.